I'd like to call the October 21st, 2025 meeting to order. Please join me for a moment of silence. If you would please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone who has joined us today. We always are happy to have you with us. We follow a written agenda which is available on our website at SalisburyNC.gov/Agendas. City council meetings are broadcast on WSRG, our local government TV station, which is available on Spectrum, Channel 16, and Hotwire, Channel 394. Meeting air times are posted on the station's website, wsrgtv.com. You can also watch current and past city council meetings on demand from the city's website, SalisburyNC.gov/videos. Moving on to the adoption of the agenda, before we move on to that, we would like to propose to the council to add an agenda item in regards to the North Carolina Rural Downtown Economic Development Grant. We'll have Mr. Green, Keisha Cox, and Chris Tester present on this. So with that addition to the agenda, council, would you make a motion to adopt the agenda as adjusted?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll go ahead and go to this agenda item. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Green.
Mayor members of council, good evening, and thank you for your flexibility in adding agenda item. I appreciate Parks and Rec Director Keisha Cox and Public Works Director Chris Tester being here tonight, really to share some good news. I don't want to steal the thunder. They've done a great job on working on a grant. I'll just remind council, last council meeting, we had the good news about the Fire Safer Grant, about $800,000 to support six new firefighter positions. Later on this agenda is council to do a budget amendment for nearly $3 million grant for our microtransit pilot program. And with that, some more good news for the city of Salisbury. I'll turn it over to Keisha and Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Good evening, mayor, mayor pro tem, city council members and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. It's very exciting news. This is a part of your strategic plan under cultural amenities and the key focus areas to seek funding opportunities to design and complete the renovation of the former Wells Fargo Building, transform it into office space and in a community event center. I'll tell you a little bit about the purpose of the grant, which is to support the downtown revitalization and economic development, which helps governments grow and leverage downtown districts for economic growth and prosperity. So the program goals consist of public improvements, downtown economic development, and public building with improvements. So we are excited. We applied for the grant and we conquered it. So the city of Salisbury has been awarded $850,000 through the North Carolina Department Commerce Rural Transformation Grant. The city's local match requirement is 42,500, which is 5% of the grant, and this funding will directly support downtown revitalization efforts by improving critical infrastructure, construction, and rehabilitation that support economic development and public accessibility for a growing city.
So yeah, I'm here to kind of give you an update on the project timeline. We are currently, again, in the design phase. We expect the completion of that right now around spring of 2026. Construction is anticipated to begin around the summer of 2026. We're looking at about a 12-month construction time. As you remember, a few weeks ago, we discussed working on a construction manager at risk and having them join the team. The architect reports a strong working relationship with Miles McClellan in construction, and that's working out really well. Staff is currently under review of a scope and fee for audiovisual contractor following the initial proposal, and a contract is expected to come before city council to approve that in an upcoming meeting. All renters are currently have vacated the building and received a 45-day notice of removal of all their remaining store items, and city staff are currently working to remove their store materials and plan to fully vacate the building by March of 2026.
So what we're requesting this evening is the mayor's approval and signature on the Rural Downtown Economic Development Grant Contract, which will officially authorize the city of Salisbury to accept the $850,000 in grant funding and proceed with the planned infrastructure improvements for the former Wells Fargo Building project.
Mayor, members of council, again, I'd like to thank the great teamwork with Public Works, Parks and Recreation, Finance Department, and others. We did apply for the max of $850,000, and we were awarded the max. Remind council, too, that this is the second state grant we've received for this project. The first, $800,000, allowed us to purchase the building, the old Wells Fargo Building, at very little cost, and now we're receiving a second grant, so total of over $1.6 million for this event center project. Apologize that we didn't get this on your agenda. We got notice after the agenda was published, but we wanted to move forward and make sure we got this in front of council tonight for your review and consideration, and then, as required by the state, the mayor will have to sign the grant agreement, and we'd like to get that back in. We will bring back a budget amendment at some point, about $850,000 to you once we get clarification more on the grant. So, great news for the city of Salisbury, tremendous news for this project.
Got you. Thank you, Mr. Green. And yes, I received an email Monday, well after the agenda went out on this, but we got to sign it and we got to get it moving. So, again, thank you so much, Keisha and Chris, and the other partners that you had across the city to apply for this grant. What a win in regards to developing this and removing costs from our taxpayers. So thank you so much for that. Council, do you all have any questions about this particular grant and project?
I just have a comment. You know, I would just like to say that I think Salisbury does an incredible job with seeking and obtaining grants, both federal and state. This is just another example. I don't know, you know, if the general public realizes how much we benefit from finding this money that doesn't come from our taxpayers. And so to the city manager and to all the staff who's worked hard on this, I just want to say, I continue to be amazed by what this council does, and thank you all. Thank you, everybody involved.
Thank you.
And I would echo that and add that, let's not, for people that aren't aware of this, that the building was purchased with the grant, also of a similar amount. So that's another $800,000 that was grant money that initiated this entire opportunity.
So council, I just need, and I don't know, what kind of, we need a motion?
Go back one slide, please.
Need a motion to accept?
Yes. Make the motion to authorize the mayor to approve the Rural Downtown Economic Grant and accept the $850,000 grant funding.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to approve and sign the Rural Downtown Economic Development Grant Contract, which will authorize the city of Salisbury to accept the $850,000 in grant funding and proceed with the planned infrastructure improvement for the former Wells Fargo Building project.
Council, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you again for all the hard work. Connie? Because I'm so excited about this grant, can you remind me, do we adopt the agenda or do we need to do that?
We did adopt.
We did adopt the agenda. Okay, just double check. So, okay. Then, moving on to agenda item number five, mayor to proclaim the following observances. World Polio Day, October 24th, 2025. Make a Difference Day, October 25th, 2025, and Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through the 31st, 2025. I have recorded all those proclamations, and they will be posted online. Moving on to agenda item number six, council to consider the consent agenda. Council receive the consent agenda in advance of the meeting. Council, any questions or items you'd like to discuss, or can I get a motion to adopt?
I'd just like to point out that the consent agenda includes another grant, you know, for the Miller Center. And sometimes we breeze through these things, but, I mean, it's something to help, you know, the West End. Just a comment. I'll make a motion, if necessary, to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Harry's pointing to me. I guess that's an instruction to go ahead.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Council to receive public comment. I will now open the floor for public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to address council. The rules of procedure for public comment are located on the table at the back of the lobby and at the speaker's table. Before we begin, I want to reference item number 11 in the rules of procedure. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. Personal attacks will not be tolerated or be deemed out of order. I encourage speakers to be courteous in their language and respectful of council members, staff, and members of the public. Thank you. Connie?
Mayor, our first speaker is Jovan Sorka.
Good morning, or, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Sorka.
My name is Jovan Sorka. I live at 612 Park Ave. So, I am here just to bring a little bit of what's going on in the neighborhood, Canaan Park. We have a huge crowd of homeless people, drug use, drug dealers, and prostitution happening at any day and time of the day. Even while children are trying to enjoy the park, the park has become lawless. The police station already have a bunch of calls they've responded to at the park for OD, curfew violations, dealing, and everything else in between. I'm hearing from people who have been here for 30 years plus that it has never been this bad, but has only gotten about 300 times worse more recently. There are men and women soliciting acts in the park, public urination, public intoxication, and decent exposure, using the city bus stop to pick up and drop off the solicitors, using substances on the children's slide to shield them, doing this in the open with zero concern for authority or accountability. The police department did install a tower, but since the initial shock has passed, it is now has zero effect on the outrageous foot and vehicle traffic. They just shifted their movements. Now, using the bus stop to park, deal, pick up, the houses that surround the park are park-facing, and all it takes is just for one bad deal, one hurt ego or someone's pride to be damaged, to send bullets flying through a resident's window. It's only but a matter of time before someone gets desperate enough and breaks into someone's home with or without the person there. Officers had asked us on shift if we would please advocate and talk to Parks and Rec to put no trespass signs so that they can just start approaching these things, and Parks and Rec had responded, no one in specific, but has responded, that it would just create too much work with having to go to court and prosecute. It is well known that the police department is understaffed, including three officers calling out sick a couple of weeks ago, or more recently, only having two officers for the entire city. No 911 call is more important than the other. I'd say with all the traffic that Chick-fil-A may have some competition when it comes to the longest drive-through line. Officers has also openly shared that they've had to ignore other calls due to already being occupied. So is the city council prioritizing city serious and dangerous problems we already have in our city managing and being good stewards of the city, or is it a priority to throw in another 200 more souls into the Canaan Park area with the Kessler Mills Development Project less than 250 feet from Canaan Park before strengthening our local police force? I'd like to end with, everyone has a privilege, keyword "privilege", to enjoy the park, other than those on the registry, clearly of revocable privilege.
Thank you. Connie, next speaker?
Mayor, our next speaker is Clyde.
Good evening, Clyde.
Thank you very much. At 224 East Bank Street. And as usual, we come to a public hearing before you vote, the same meeting. We did that with the budget. We never got to talk. So today, on the sale of the depot, this is the first chance, and I'm taking this because we won't have a public hearing on the purchase and the sale of the depot, but it's time that somebody said these things out loud. It's a sad day that we're selling the depot. It's the most beautiful venue that we have in Salisbury, and to lose that is just sad. And I think we owe a clement apology. Look up at me, please. I want to look at all of you and say, shame on you for doing this to our town. We worked very hard. A lot of people raised the money to buy the depot preservation. I do not call this preservation. It's business. You'll be taking it off the tax books. Southern Railway does not pay taxes. They don't pay taxes on the right-of-way. They don't get stormwater fees. They don't get ugly letters in the mail about the way the railroad looks, the bridges look, and the tax base. We won't have the tax base for the depot. It's appraised at $5.2 million. Now, some of you would say it's not good business to sell a property under the appraised value. We've heard that. It's just not right. And it's, I'm afraid, this is just me and a lot of people, it's going to be a vibrant fiasco. Using that building will be like discarding it. And look at the buildings we have now, the shabby city buildings, the civic center, the buildings we have, and we got grants to do this. Man, I know you're going to get grants. I don't know that all those grants will come through with the government shutdowns. We not, what happens if we don't get the money? Do we have protection that say that the depot will still be preserved? It's a museum, but we can't even go in it and see it. And who knows? Are there deed restrictions on this, that it will be preserved? And I don't know. I just think that it's a shame that we sell the depot.
Thank you, Clyde. Connie, next speaker?
Mayor, our next speakers, we've got three together. It's the Youth Empowerment Team, it's Brooke Zino, Madeline Wicker, and Sam Faulkner.
They wanted to come up together.
Good evening, Mayor Sheffield.
Welcome. If I could get you to sit, the microphone's there so we can hear you out in the wonderful world of webness. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sheffield, and members of the city council. My name is Brooks Zino.
And I'm Madeline Wicker.
And I'm Sam Faulkner.
And we are members of the Youth Empowerment Team with YSUP Rowan. We want to thank you for recognizing Red Ribbon Week, which is October 30th, sorry, October 23rd through October 31st, and writing a proclamation and supporting prevention work in our community. YSUP Rowan, which stands for Youth Substance Use Prevention, is our county's Drug-Free Committee's volunteer coalition. We work to prevent youth substance use and promote healthy lifestyles through education, outreach, and community partnerships. We focus on issues like vaping, alcohol, and marijuana use. And we work with schools, youth, parents, law enforcement, and many other organizations to create positive change within our community.
Our Youth Empowerment Team is made up of high school students across Rowan County who want to make a difference. We lead projects like prevention campaigns, such as our Prom Promise Initiative, school activities, and community events that raise awareness about substance use and other youth-centered issues. We also serve as the youth voice for the coalition by sharing ideas, learning leadership skills, and showing our peers that living drug-free and making healthy choices really does make an impact.
Red Ribbon Week is one of our favorite times of year because it gives us a chance to celebrate living drug-free and to spread a positive message across the community. Some of our activities this year include a school decorating contest and a free virtual parent education session titled Drugs Uncovered: What Parents Need to Know. We are so thankful for your recognition and support in helping us continue this work to make Rowan County a healthier and safer place for young people to grow. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Connie, next speaker?
Mayor, we've got one more speaker, Ms. Dottie Hoy.
Welcome, Ms. Hoy.
Thank you. This is an information question because I just really don't remember. With the city elections in process right now, when does the newly elected city council take office? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoy. I think we can answer that. Graham, can you answer that very quickly?
Be happy to. The new council will be sworn in at the first meeting in December, which is the second or the third. Confirm that right now. It'll be December 2nd, our first meeting in December, which is December 2nd.
Thank you, Graham. Connie, any other comments?
No, ma'am, that's all.
All right. That will close the public comment timeframe and continue with the agenda. Agenda item number eight. Council to consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Downtown or Holdings LLC in the amount not to exceed $2,895,000 and to adopt a budget ordinance amendment to the full-year 2025-2026 budget in the same amount to appropriate the mobility for everyone everywhere in North Carolina grant for expenses related to the microtransit pilot program. Presenters are Transit Director Rodney Harris and Budget Manager Tracy Keys. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Sheffield, and members of city council. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ryan. He looks familiar. He's been here before. He's with Downtown or Holding LLC, and he's the head of financing operations. He also brought with him Mr. Julian. He's sitting in the audience, and he's the regional manager. Of course, everyone knows Tracy Keys is our fantastic budget manager. Thank you for the opportunity to present an update on our microtransit pilot project. This evening, we will provide an overview of our progress to date, including key developments related to the contract, grant funding, and budget alignment. We will also outline next steps as we advance toward full implementation. Implementing a microtransit program to connect neighborhoods and residents with grown economic opportunities and improve mobility for all. opportunities and improve mobility for all is a key initiative within the city's strategic plan. This efforts directly support the economic and workforce development focus area, reinforcing our commitment to inclusive growth and accessible transportation. As I mentioned, um, this presentation purposes to provide city council with an update of the microtransit pilot project contract with Downtowner and grant acceptance. We will request council to consider improving the contract and a budget ordinance. A little background, um, May 2nd, 2025, um, executed agreement, um, from NC DOT IMD was received. Major milestone, this was a long, um, process, and we finally got signed agreements from the state. The performance period, which is established by NC DOT, is July 1, 2024 to December 31st, 2027. Uh, that grant, the federal share is 40% and the state's share is 60%. So therefore, there's no local match, uh, for this grant. And again, the total amount is $2,895,000. July 11th, uh, a vendor was selected to recommend the city council. In August of 2025, council approved Downtowner Holding to provide microtransit service for the pilot project and authorized the city manager to negotiate a contract with the service provider in the amount of $2,895,000. On September 19th, Ruth, Takesha from HR, Tracy, and myself met with transit team members to ensure all team members, um, were informed and prepared for the upcoming microtransit service launch, which is scheduled to begin January 19th of 2026. Uh, this meeting allows us to discuss microtransit background, the vendor selection process, project scope, um, Downtowner timeline, rider and team members' communication strategy, HR support, as well as phase one and phase two transition. Phase one transition is, um, happening now until late January when, um, the service is implemented. Currently, we have two vacant full-time transit operator positions and one part-time service worker position, uh, which will not be filled. This planned and strategic approach enable us to retain the majority of our existing workforce. We will be reducing our part-time pool as a result of transitioning our ADA paratransit and our fixed route to Downtowner. However, and, and, uh, Mr. Ryan may talk a little about it later, um, they did agree to prioritize the city's current team members for positions, um, which we posted in late fall. So they will look at some of our transit operators prior to open it up to the public. Phase two, um, um, service will frequently be evaluated once the service is launched. City council will find directions based on data, um, collected and presented to council from Downtowner. Um, and that data could make recommendations as far as implementing Saturday service, extended service hours, or going citywide with this project. At this point, I'll turn it over to Tracy.
Thank you, Rodney. So the funds to support microtransit were not included in the approved FY 25-26 budget, so therefore, we have a budget ordinance tonight that must be approved to appropriate the mobility for everyone everywhere in North Carolina or the MNC grant that will pay for the trans, uh, microtransit pilot project. For the contract highlights, Downtowner Holdings will provide a turnkey solution for the microtransit pilot, pilot project. Uh, the solution will provide operators vehicles, including maintenance and fuel, software, and management for Route 3, which serves Spencer, East Spencer, the VA Medical Center, and Novant Health Rowan Medical Center, as well as, uh, takeover ADA paratransit. The contract is for three years, and it will not exceed the grand amount of $2,895,000. Uh, there is an option to renew for up to two additional years if additional funding is made available. So the city manager, the assistant city manager, city attorney, budget manager, transit director, we all collaborated with North Carolina DOT IMD, NC State, and Downtowner to finalize the contract details. And so, um, the, the costs are listed here. Uh, year one, the cost will be $971,991. We will have an initial setup fee, a one-time cost for signing the contract and vehicle procurement. Um, we'll have fixed costs billed quarterly, and then variable costs will be billed monthly. And variable costs include fuel and driver payroll. Um, right now, they're approximately $29,000 a month. And then also, you can see if we wish to add on some services like Saturday service, um, there's a cost to that, and that will increase the total amount per year. And so then also, if we expand services, like say we're going to expand to another route or go, um, citywide, we do have an hourly rate to cover those expanded costs. And so with that, I will turn it over to Ryan, and he'll talk about the implementation schedule and next steps.
Thank you very much, Tracy. Uh, good evening, city council. And Rodney already introduced me. My name is Ryan Spargarren. I'm one of the co-founders of Downtowner. And as he mentioned, I have in the audience Julian Lina, who will be our regional manager for Salisbury. Uh, we are absolutely honored and privileged to be back tonight and are ready to launch the service on January 19th. In fact, the wheels are already in motion, no pun intended. You will see our implementation schedule, which allows us to comfortably meet the January 19th launch date. We have already had multiple kickoff meetings, and the five Toyota Sienna minivans have been procured with a December 1st delivery date. Uh, in our kickoff meetings, we have already discussed service promotion, and we'll have Downtowner staff and education material in the vehicles of the current paratransit and Route 3 services in the weeks leading up to the January 19th launch. Our staff will educate riders one-on-one on how to use the new service and prepare for the transition. We are also starting the process of reaching out to the current city transit team to provide them the first opportunity to apply for the driver positions. We look to hire five full-time drivers, three part-time drivers, and one to two fill-in drivers. Lastly, our management is in the process of relocating to the area and will be on the ground shortly. I'd like to finish by saying that we're beyond excited to provide this service, uh, for the community of Salisbury, and we can't wait to get started. I will turn it back to Rodney or Tracy to wrap things up.
So at this time, um, we'll take any questions from council?
Well, first of all, thank you, and Ryan, great to see you back again. So thank you for being here again. Um, council, I'll turn it over to you for any questions.
Procurement of five vehicles? That caused, those vehicles, they belong to the city or still belong with, um, the holdings, with Ryan's company? How's that work?
Uh, they will be owned by Downtowner. It's a completely turnkey operation, so.
Okay.
Uh, the vehicles will be owned by Downtowner. They'll insure them, they'll maintain them, they'll, you know, pay for gas. All the employees will work for them. They'll be their own W2 employees. Um, so.
That being said, if you were to hire some of the city employees, and they would be long, long, long be part of the city, they'd be part of?
Our team.
Okay. All right.
I've, I've got a few questions. First of all, thank you for doing this. Um, I understand we're your only account right now in North Carolina.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Our only account.
And where's your home base?
We are based out of Florida.
Um, Rodney, do we have, um, information on transfers right now? Does our data, I know we bought, uh, machinery five or six years ago to put in the buses to keep track of stuff, when people get on buses, when people get off. Do we track transfers? Do we know how many get off of Route 3 and get onto a Route 2 or Route 1 bus?
Um, the software you're referring to don't actually count transfers. They are, it's an automated passenger counter system, so it counts the passengers, not the transfers. We used to account for transfers, but we stopped that process. We can probably dig up our, our pull paperwork and identify how many were issued in a day, but for each route, I'm not sure.
And, and one of my concerns, as y'all have heard me say for the past few years, is that the way we're doing the pilot project, where we're doing one route, each of our routes is about an hour and a half round trip in round numbers. So somebody who currently goes to work from a location on Route 2 transfers to Route 3, they're going to spend three hours on that bus because they're going to have to do both loops once. You know, you can get off in one place, you have to finish the loop on the way back. So, uh, that's the reason I'm asking about the transfers, because when we're only doing one route, we've still got that same problem where somebody uses Downtowner, they get on their, you know, they, they, you're in app development beginning next month, it looks like, according to your timeframe. You know, I call up and I say, hey, Ryan, I live, you know, near Catawba College, I want to go to Walmart. And you say, okay. And then you take me to the train depot, which is where the transfer point is, and I got to wait 20 minutes or whatever, 30 minutes for the bus. It's going to take me to Walmart, then I'm going to leave Walmart, and I'm going to have to complete that loop. So I'll be in that, in the Route 2 loop or wherever it was Walmart for an hour and a half. I'll come back to the train station, I'll call you up and say, hey, I want to go home, you know, back to Catawba College. So we haven't solved that problem of, you know, which is, you know, and I've expressed to the city manager and I think to all the city council, you know, is my concern. Are you going to keep track of transfers?
Yes, we, we can track, uh, any destination to the transfer point.
And people that you, okay.
Yes.
So, all right.
Yes.
And so, um, because I think that's going to be valuable data.
Mm-hmm.
You know, as far as what we do. I mean, my familiarity with this, and I've looked at this, you know, a number of cities around the country, is that they grow exponentially. I mean, I don't know if you've talked to Catawba at all, but they are currently, you know, they have Catawba Go, and they're currently serving in round numbers, almost triple, double to triple what our bus system does, you know, every week, month, however you want to measure it, in the first month and a half that they've been running their system. So I hope that the city can keep track of the transfers also, if it's possible, if we have the equipment to do it. So we can understand that. I mean, our, our job here is to serve the public. And the more information, if, if, you can only manage what you can measure. And if we can't measure it, we can't manage it. So if there's a way for us to keep track of that, I think that's important as far as the possibility of our needing to expand the system. The city manager pointed out to me, I got a good giggle out of this, but it's interesting that, you know, one, another city in North Carolina, they find that their busiest time is after school, when students, you know, need a ride to Chick-fil-A or somewhere. Are, are we going to have any kind of, uh, component so that that's not our biggest, you know, rideshare situation? I mean, it, I mean, you have to be at least out of high school or something. I mean, I'm not sure that's what this is intended for. Do we have anything? Have we given any thoughts, any policies relative to this?
We, council member posts, yes, sir, we are working on policies, working closely with Downtowner. They have experiences with other cities as well, and I'll let Ryan speak a little more to that. But yes, our policies and procedures, those are going to be important, and so we're working to develop those now. But Ryan, your experience Savannah or Denver or other places?
Yes, so we, if, if we find that that is not, uh, the intention of the service is to provide those trips to the, the schools, we can have restrictions, uh, around certain times, you know, when the school's let out, um, if we would like to do that. Um, so that, that's usually what we would recommend.
That's a matter of us adopting a policy and.
Yes, we could make a.
You don't do the policy, we do the policy and you implement.
We could make a recommendation with the policy and you could approve it. Um, and say if that ends up being something that is overwhelming the service, so.
What, what's been your experience with starting these in some of the other towns that you've served and the growth rate that you've experienced?
It's, it's typically pretty quick. It all depends on, um, you know, we're, we're taking over a, a route. So I would, I would expect it, the traction to be quick. And yeah, and then it's about, you know, just what we want to do with the service. If we, uh, want to have fares, what level of fares, um, you know, restrictions and so.
Do we, have we created, are, are we going to continue with the same fare that we continue to have?
That's something we're evaluating as well, council member posts, and we'll be bringing back that, bringing back that recommendation for council. One other point I'd like to make to your question on service and changes, again, that's where I see the benefit of this pilot. Uh, we're going to be able to evaluate this data, and one of the things that we were clear in the RFP is that we're looking for a partner that can gather and collect and share that data. So that's going to be important for us, and we've talked about even doing quarterly updates with council to let you all know how it's going. But as we evaluate that data, being able to re, make recommendations for improved services or changes to those services or new policies. So I, I think the pilot program, I understand your concern and your desire to go citywide, but I, I think this pilot is going to really help us learn and grow and implement this system fairly and appropriately.
And, and I appreciate that. I just want to point out to the public that our budget right now for transportation is about $1.7 million a year, a little bit more, close, you know, it's pretty, a little bit more than 1.7, which is almost $900,000. I mean, which is, and, and we're getting this 900, roughly $900,000 a year, you know, that we're going to be paying Downtowner. So we could theoretically, you know, if, if we find that the demand is there and eliminated the route system, you know, we could take our budget, you know, which is 1.7, uh, which is roughly two times what we're going, our contract with you, and provide citywide service. And I think that's what we'll be studying over the next few months, you know, especially as we approach budget season and in the, us, in the early summer.
Yes, sir. And as Rodney and Tracy mentioned, uh, we're going to be able to evaluate that data, estimate costs. This contract has those cost figures, and that's, again, something we can bring back and discuss with council. But we're excited about implementing this pilot. It's been a council goal for several years, and so looking at January to implement this and then continue to evaluate and review that data and bring this back to council and update you and get your feedback, we're excited about kicking this off.
And I have just one more question, which is, have you communicate, Catawba College has its Catawba Go program, which, as I mentioned, has been, you know, highly successful from their point of view. Have we talked to them at all about integration of services or something to, again, to provide, you know, services, you know, expand our service provision to, you know, to the city? Have we, have we talked to them?
I've not spoken with Catawba about integrating. However, I did speak with the gentleman that runs that operation, um, and he's supposed to, um, made a commitment to come to our next advisory board meeting to give us update on ridership numbers and costs and things of that nature. But no, we have not talked about integration.
It might be the wrong word. Partnering might be a better.
Partner, we, we, we did discuss that, just because they recently implemented their microtransit.
They did 4,000 rides the first month.
Yeah.
I, I've had some initial conversations as well, council member posts, with Catawba College about opportunities to look at services and partner and, uh, see how we can work together.
Thank you for doing this. Really, I'm excited about it.
Um, as far as, and please say we gave, we, we have two vacancies for full-time and part-time, and we're not going to hammer those because of this new transit system that we're taking place. Okay, and after it's taken place, you hire the people you have, are we going to be still sufficient enough to cover what we're doing now in our routes, Rodney? Or do we still need to go out and just hire somebody else?
Very good question. Um, and, and we spoke about that today. He's going to possibly start advertising and feel in position maybe in November, December timeframe. And once he see which employees he would like to, um, hire for Downtowner, then we'll know how we have to adjust. Um, we feel that we will be in pretty good shape to continue to offer our fixed route system, but it all depends on how many of our employees decide to go to Downtowner. So, um, that, that's fluid, constantly changing, so it all depends on the decision that Downtowner makes.
And I would just like to make sure that we, if we expand, that current employees are not going to lose their job based off when this new system, if it takes over the whole city. And we have a plan in place to make sure that they have a spot, um, in someplace. I like to look at that as well, ensure that.
What is your.
What is your current total headcount, part-time and full-time?
Part-time and full-time, we're at about, uh, 26, I think it is? About around 26?
About half of those are part-time, Rodney, or?
Yes, half part-time, roughly half full-time, and that includes office staff as well as mechanics, they're not all drivers, that's everybody that takes transit, um, to operate on a day-to-day basis, mechanics, office, dispatcher, part-time transit operator, full-time transit operators. I would like to mention, I think, Council Post, we just talked in policy earlier, um, this is a turnkey operation, um, but I would like to say the city still has final decision on policies. We work with Downtowner to make recommendations, but the city's, um, and it's in the contract that we make those final decisions, so we're still in control of those policies, how it's shaped.
Thank you, Rodney. Counsel, any more questions? Here you go, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make it.
Go ahead, David.
Go for it.
I'll make the motion to authorize city manager to execute a contract with Downtowner Holdings LLC in amount not to exceed 2,895,000 and adopt a budget ordinance amendment to the FY 2025, 2026 budget in the same amount to appropriate the mobility for everyone everywhere in North Carolina grant for expenses related to the microtransit pilot program.
Madam Mayor, before we vote, just wanted to point out again, this is grant, these are grant dollars, these are not taxpayer-funded dollars.
Fully funded.
Yep.
Yep.
I mean, this is another example of, to what Councilman Clutz was talking about, how we're chasing money to do some of the things we need to do.
It took a while, but we were fortunate.
Years on this one, Rodney didn't give up, thank you.
Transit team didn't give up. Finance and attorney and city manager.
The long list, right. Well, counsel, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, Ryan and team, thank you so much, welcome Downtowner to not only Salisbury but North Carolina. We look forward for a great partnership.
We're honored to be here.
Thank you so much. Tracy, Rodney, thank you all.
Thanks.
Counsel, moving on to agenda item number nine. Counsel to consider approving the purchase and sales agreement by adopting a resolution to purchase the historic Salisbury Depot. Presenter, City Attorney, Mr. Graham Corrier.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm also gonna ask, uh, our Transportation Director Jared Mathis to, to assist on this and also to drive the slide show because I don't have a clicker up here.
I know.
So to continue with the theme of grant funding, this project is fully funded by a federal grant and, uh, state transportation funding with a small local match, so we'll go through the, the numbers of that in just a second. This, this is an exciting agreement to bring to council, this follows your resolution of intent to purchase the depot that you adopted back in August. Um, you had been working with Stork Salisbury Foundation for a number of years, we initially got approved for this grant in 2022, um, working with Stork Salisbury to make sure that, uh, both parties were satisfied with the, the purchase agreement and the intent of the purchase. Um, so we adopted that resolution of intent in August, and since then I've been working with, um, city staff and with staff from the Stork Salisbury Foundation to prepare a purchase and sales agreement for the depot, which is what's before you tonight, so you'll go to the next slide. This addresses two things on your strategic plan, sustainable infrastructure and economic and workforce development, specifically, um, economic and sustainable growth and, uh, projects that prepare for that growth and development. I'll, I'll talk about how this ties into a couple other projects, the depot on the next slide, but it also relates to, um, economic and workforce development, specifically the strategy calls out this exact item, which is the purchase of the depot to make it into a multimodal, um, transportation site centered around, um, rail travel, next slide. So again, this, this is a, one part of a three-legged stool related to the depot, pretty significant part of it, which is acquiring the depot to restore it back to its original use as a train station. And so this is part of an 11.7 million dollar grant, again, we'll go into the breakdown of that in a second, but it's federal and state monies with a little bit of local match, uh, in the mix to purchase the depot and renovate it and restore it back to, uh, an Amtrak station. That is the, the central purpose of this grant. Um, we got this grant as part of the congestion mitigation air quality program to bring people to in, increase rail travel, that was the, the point of the grant, is to increase the number of people that are gonna ride the train by making it, doing the, the first and last mile, making it easier to get to and from the depot, and also in, in making the experience when you're at the depot and riding the train a more enjoyable experience than it is now. So that's the featured event number one, if there's a depot restoration and multimodal transportation center. It also plays into two other important projects with, are on the list, the first of those is the, um, DOT project to build a second platform, uh, on the other side of the track from this one, and a pedestrian underpass, um, to get to the second platform. And again, that's, that's a project that's got several years on it, we've been working with the railroad on that recently, um, and goes back to a partnership with the Stork Salisbury Foundation on that, when that grant, or that project was, was being planned. And the last is, is the pretty substantial, um, Western NC Corridor feasibility study project, so we're studying, um, the feasibility of, of connecting Salisbury and Asheville to, um, activate the western part of the state with Salisbury as the hub for western rail travel, um, to Salisbury and then to points, uh, north and south of Salisbury. So again, this is just one part of the three, uh, three projects that are centered around the depot, and a very critical part is, is the city purchasing the depot. Next slide. Um, the, did our, I don't think our breakdown made it in here.
It didn't.
Uh, we didn't get the updated one, so.
I can talk about it.
I've got the, uh, I've got the printout if you need the numbers. Sorry, this, the slide didn't update when we added the, uh, specific numbers, do you need this?
It'd be helpful.
Yeah, I think it would be.
But I was gonna go over, well, first off, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, good to see you again, um, but I was gonna go over the funding breakdown, uh, in reference to the grant. Grandma's exactly right, city has a very small portion, roughly 2.7% match of the 11.7 million dollars. Uh, I wanted to break that down, so we've authorized two phases, the two phases that have been authorized is the preliminary engineering, which is the design, so after we acquire the building, we'll be able to start that process, which is roughly $750,000 of total, total monies, and with that being said, our match for that will be roughly $20,000, so. Um, and then next, we've had the right-of-way authorized, that's for the purchase of the depot, and like I was saying before, um, that total funding amount is about $5 million that we have authorized, so we would be responsible for 2.74%, which is roughly $136,000 is our, our match. But that's, that was the, the summation of it, Graham covered the grant, what type of grant it is, and, and we're good to go, so.
Again, a lot of money being leveraged for this particular project, very little of that coming from, um, city funds. So, the next thing I'm gonna go over, the next slide is just related to the specifics of the purchase and sale agreement. Again, this goes back to August when you adopt the resolution of intent to purchase the depot, the purchase price, um, was then as it is now, will you go to the next slide, please? Uh, purchase price of three and a half million dollars, again, all that coming from grant funding. Another material term of it is the city's going to reimburse HSF for the actual relocation expenses that HF, HSF is going to incur moving from its existing offices and storage area to new offices and storage area, and that's a, a requirement of the, um, federal grant, and we have been and will continue to work with the foundation, um, to go through that process with, with DOT, in fact, there's a kickoff meeting for that scheduled tomorrow. Another term of this is the city's going, we're not, we're not ready to get this construction started tomorrow, it's gonna take a while to do the design and consultation process, and so as part of the purchase agreement, we will immediately lease back rent-free to the Stork Salisbury Foundation for up to a year, the offices and storage area that they're using now. So nothing, there, there isn't an urgency for them to relocate, we'll work with them to make sure that their relocation is, um, timely and it doesn't interfere, uh, with our project. But again, we're not ready to get started yet, we've got a lot of work to go through on that. Uh, the, the last piece of the, uh, purchase and sale agreement is, when are we gonna close? When is this gonna happen? Again, you're approving the agreement tonight, um, we've got to go through and prepare the closing documents, I worked with HSF's attorney on that, and the outside closing date of December 12th is what we've put in the agreement, we'd like to close as soon as possible, we're still waiting on a survey, we've still gotta go through the process with DOT to make sure all of the requirements of the federal and state grants are met, uh, but we've put an outside closing date of December 12th on that, we'd like to close again as, as soon as possible. Um, the other thing that I wanted to comment on is, um, what we're gonna do, we're, we're renovating the depot, restoring to its historic use, um, and there was a question about covenants, are there covenants on the particular, um, on this deed? There will not, there are some covenants on the deed for some specific pieces of, um, the depot that aren't otherwise covered by layers of historic preservation that already exist, so there will be a few deed restrictions in the deed related to three particular items, um, on the depot, the, the glass awning, um, the sign and the donor plaque, so there are not traditional deed covenants on it. However, there are layers of restrictions that the city's got to comply with, the first is this is a, uh, property that's been listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and it's been on the, on that registry since June of 1975, normally that does, that doesn't come with restrictions, but we're using federal funding, and so we've got to make sure that it complies with, um, the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Historic Preservation, that's one layer of protection. This is in our downtown local historic district, so everything that's in our downtown local historic district, any exterior changes have to go to the Historic Preservation Commission. A few minor changes can be approved at staff level, but most of the major changes, including renovation of building, would come before the commission itself, that's exterior changes. Going back to April of 2019, when the city kind of kicked off this, this has been a project that the city and the Stork Salisbury Foundation have been talking about for the better part of a decade, if not longer, but in 2019, related to all these, um, projects, uh, Historic Salisbury Foundation applied for, and the city designated the station as a local historic landmark, so it's one of handful of local historic landmarks in the city. The difference between, so when you're a local historic landmark, you've got to come back to the Historic Commission for any exterior approvals. Well, that was already there, what additional protections does that afford? None, except the designation also designated much of the interior of the depot as a local historic landmark. So where normally you come to Historic Preservation Commission meeting, they're only dealing with exterior changes, in this case, they'll be dealing with the interior changes that are designated in the ordinance, and, um, it's pretty lengthy, the list that's in there. So there are layers of protection to ensure that the city's, uh, restoration and renovation of this building will be consistent with, um, with one of our guiding principles of historic preservation, um, in the city. And then lastly on this, I just wanted to, um, tell council and, and publicly thank the Stork Salisbury Foundation for approving this, this went before their board last Thursday for approval, and it was approved, and so the Stork Salisbury Foundation has approved this agreement, and it's before council tonight for your consideration and approval, and the president of the board is here, um, to, to watch this, and I want to extend a public thank you to, to him and to the Stork Salisbury Foundation for partnering with the city on this project. I believe that is it, I'm happy to answer any questions, if you want to flip to the next slide just to make sure I didn't miss anything. So again, just asking council to adopt a resolution that will approve the purchase and sale agreement, but happy to entertain any questions that you have.
Thank you, Graham. Uh, counsel, any questions or comments?
I have a comment. Um, I'm excited about this, and it's been a long time coming, and I, first of all, would like to thank Graham for complicated legal work that's gone on for these many years, and he always does an excellent job for us, and thank you to Graham. Secondly, I want to thank the Historic Salisbury Foundation, its board chair, Edward Norville is here, um, for the years of working with us, um, to make this possible, and the good care they've taken of the building in the meantime. And lastly, I'd like to thank Ed Clement, who, uh, we consider the father of historic preservation, first here in Salisbury in the 1970s, and this building, and the many buildings here that were saved, and then throughout the state of North Carolina. He taught us in Salisbury the value of historic preservation, and he made it possible for us to have this treasure here in Salisbury. We know its value and how to take care of it. And personally, I would like to say myself, um, I worked, I fought for four years in Raleigh throughout the state for historic preservation. I would not be sitting here in this chair right now, and I would not be supporting this effort if I felt in any way this building would be jeopardized. I think that, um, I just want to say thank you to everybody that's been involved with this, because I believe this is gonna be a turning point for Salisbury. So thank you all, and thank you to this council that's worked so hard on this for so long.
Thank you, Ms. Clutz. Counsel, any other comments?
I would, again, it's easy sitting beside her, all I gotta say is ditto. That's great, it's a great seat to have, um.
All right, thank you, David, no. Just kidding.
That's all right, no you weren't, no you weren't. Um, I was, uh, Executive Director of Historic Salisbury Foundation about 13, 14 years ago for about a year, and, uh, you know, we're the buyer, we're not the seller. Um, I, this is, and, and historic, HSF wanted to sell this building. I mean, when I was there, just keeping enough money in the bank to deal with what we had to do with was, I mean, I was, felt like I was always underwater, for example, 13 years ago, we had to replace the roof, it's not been replaced yet, but I found a contractor who could sort of paint it with a certain type of rubber that it would last for 10 years, that's now 13 years ago, this building needs some work, and Historic Salisbury Foundation, and I see, you know, its president nodding in agreement with me, I mean, they lack the resources to maintain, you know, this building, so this is, I think, a win-win, I mean, you know, from the financial point of view, and we're not doing this because of the financial aspect, but, you know, this gives the Historic Salisbury Foundation some long-needed working capital to be able to sustain itself, to preserve more buildings in Salisbury, so I think this is, is a win-win for all the reasons that we've seen on this thing. Um, the, um, and as I say every time this thing comes up, um, if you're ever in Washington, DC, and you're walking around the mall, between the Capitol and the Lincoln Memorial is the American History Museum, walk inside that building, it's a magnificent museum, turn right and walk about, eh, 100 steps, and you know what you're gonna see? You're gonna see a replica of the Salisbury, and it's a permanent exhibit, it's not a temporary exhibit, you can see a permanent repl, replica of the Salisbury train station, and some of the stuff in there, like the bench and a counter, they are taken from this train station, and they're a permanent exhibit in Washington, DC, it's on the first floor as you walk in. So, I mean, this is unbelievable, you know, that we are part of, you know, of that, you know, national museum. So I want to say thank you to Edward Clement and Norville, and, uh, to the HSF board, uh, and I think we're gonna make this, you know, the best thing for, for everybody concerned. Uh, and the, the other thing is, I think you pointed out that we're negotiating this route to Asheville, that's been on the books since the 1800s, you know, the hope to have a route from Salisbury, which was on the, you know, the wagon trail from South Carolina to Washington, then to New York, Highway 29, and, uh, you know, it's been on the books for, you know, well over 100 years, and so it might happen now, that's kind of amazing when you think about it. Abraham Lincoln was a railroad lawyer, you know, I mean, so this has been a long time coming.
Thank you, Mr. Post. Counsel, any other questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion, if there are no more questions or comments. I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase and sale agree, uh, sales agreement by adopting a resolution to purchase the Historic Salisbury Depot.
Counsel, we have a motion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, I would just like to say thanks as well, um, to Historic Salisbury Foundation, um, most of it's been said, but for number one, saving it, preserving it as long as you have, getting it back to better than the original glory, um, it's not been on the tax books since you guys had it, so, um, that, that's not something that's happening, we are going to, Graham, you eloquently put it, it's a three-legged stool, the only other thing I would add to that is it does help HSF get back to their original mission in helping multiple places instead of one place, and it's got a lot of things around it that will all. And it's got a lot of things around it that will always preserve it. When I've talked about this in the past, this is a multi-generational project. I'm not sure that some of us will be around to see it, but our kids and grandkids will definitely be able to enjoy that full connection across the state. Passenger rail is one of the biggest topics anywhere you go. I can't mention the number of organizations just in North Carolina alone that are behind us that believe this is the right project. And again, thanks to the multiple boards on HSF and the multiple boards on the city council over the years for making this happen. I have to believe somewhere that Mayor Karen Alexander is very happy to see step one happen of this, and we will continue to move forward on this project. So Jared, thank you. Graham, thank you. Mr. Green, thank you. And thank you, counsel. Okay, counsel, moving on to the next agenda items, the city attorney reports.
I've said my piece. I don't have anything else tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to city manager report, Mr. Green.
Mayor members of council, last week, or last meeting, I invited Chris Tester up to share our litter sweep program that Public Works led and picked up over 1,000 pounds of trash off of city streets. But Public Works doesn't just focus on city streets. They also partner with other organizations to focus on our streams and creeks and just had a great program of Creek Week and asked Chris to share that and also reintroduce you to remember this team that helps lead this work. Chris?
Yeah, thank you. That's basically what I'm here for, is to introduce Elise. She did all the legwork on this, and I'm going to let her toot her own horn on this one.
Welcome, Elise.
Good to see y'all. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. I'm excited to share a few quick highlights of Rowan Creek Week with you all tonight. So Creek Week just wrapped up this last weekend. It ran October 11th through 18th, and this was the seventh Rowan Creek Week. So it's been growing every year, and since the beginning of Creek Week in Rowan County, the city of Salisbury has been a part of it. In fact, we have two staff members that sit on the planning committee for this. So yeah, this is a really fun collaboration between community partners, education groups, and businesses. It's basically a week-long celebration of our local waterways and to build awareness around water quality. It features recreation, education, and a number of volunteer events. And I know that's really tiny, but that, just to give you a quick peek at how busy Creek Week is, it's packed with events every single day. I have some fun photos from the four events that city of Salisbury was a part of this last Creek Week. On Monday, I don't have any photos of it, but we did a really cool event with the Rowan Public Library here on our watersheds and just bringing some awareness to what's our local watershed, our drainage basin, and how are we impacting water quality here? And then on Tuesday, SRU led a cool event over at Grants Creek at their wastewater treatment center. It was called From Flush to Finish. That one happened on Tuesday. And then on Wednesday, we had Water Wednesday, which the majority of these photos are from. It was over at Community Park. We probably had, I think, nine different education vendors there. Wildlife Resource Commission helped facilitate free fishing for everyone who attended. It was, it was a great day. And then, oh, there are the SRU photos of the wastewater treatment plant. Then on Thursday, we had a couple of events. We got to partner with one of our local downtown businesses, New Serum Brewing, and Andy hosted a really cool and nerdy tour at the brew house, talking about how water quality impacts breweries. So we had some attendees at that. And then afterwards, we also had a water quality trivia night. And then on Friday, we did a cleanup over at Town Creek. It was a creek cleanup, and that's our last photo over there from it, some different individuals and family members. We picked up a good amount of trash for an hour on a Friday after work. And then we didn't ourselves participate in this event, but this is tied to an ongoing partnership we have with Catawba College, their Tribeta students, which is the biology fraternity. They regularly clean up this Oscar, which is, it collects trash in the water before it can move on. And so they've kind of adopted this, and as a part of Creek Week, they cleaned that up over at Memorial Park on Saturday. And I just wanted to kind of showcase how large Creek Week has grown. This is a representation of all of the partners that are involved. So, yeah, just some exciting news about water quality education. Thanks for letting me share.
This is great news. I think the partnerships are amazing. And you said it was the seventh year that we've participated in this. It's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd like to know about this in advance next year also.
We can make sure of that.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
Again, just thanks to Public Works. They do a great job on these programs. And Mayor, council, I hope you have a great Halloween.
All right, thank you. Nice tie, by the way.
Thank you.
Counsel, comments? I'm going to start this way this time. Mr. Jackson, none for you? All right. Mr. Post?
Incredible work by a lot of people. Short meeting, but, you know, it's like Councilman Clutz said, I mean, if you go through the 200-page packet we got, it's all legal work. And you guys did an amazing job. Everybody here did, so thank you all.
Same, just thank you to everyone.
All right, thank you all. Mayor Protem, comments?
Thank you, and I welcome all the candidates. You can get the opportunity to see a lot of things that the city is doing and with the staff that supports us, so just want to say welcome. And also, I wanted to, Mr. Sort of, thank you for, I know he's not here, but addressing the concerns that he has, you know, the city doesn't know, we don't know what's going on unless you come and address it. So I appreciate that. Just sometimes getting people to come is the most difficult part, but I'm glad he was able to express and take a look at it. Working with Parks and Recs, I'm not sure how that worked out, but if, Jim, if Parks and Recs like to readdress what was said about what they did and did not do, I'd like to hear if that's an opportunity at this time.
Yes, sir, thank you. Working closely with Parks and Rec and our police department.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Mayor's announcements and comments. Well, what a busy two weeks it has been in the city of Salisbury. We did the ribbon cutting on our new fire station, number three, over on Moxville, no, Mahaly, sorry. Look, I'm acting like it's 10 o'clock at night. Mahaly Drive, which was a great turnout, beautiful day. Chief, thank you so much to you and your team. First-class job over there, so thank you to the whole team. I got the chance to attend a food pantry ribbon cutting over in the Rowan County Community Center last week. It's an organization called Soldiers Angels. And this food pantry allows people, veterans, to sign up and come and shop. So the ribbon cutting day, they had 75 slots that filled up just like that when they put it out there. It speaks to the need of our community. They have fresh produce, they have fresh meats, and they have frozen food. So it is just, it's a, it's a very unique one. They are, and I do have some information if anybody's interested in finding out about them, they are soldiersangels.org is their information. They just serve so many places. They are based out of San Antonio, Texas, and this is, I don't know if it's the first one in North Carolina, but it's the first one in this region. This became possible because of a grant opportunity through the Charlotte Hornets. So we are very excited to know that the Hornets chose Salisbury to work with this organization here at our home. We have the hospital here, and it's just very important that we recognize, but we also care-take of these folks who are taking care of us on the daily. And so thank you so much for that. Saying that, I do want to go ahead and mention, and I will mention it again, but to get it on people's calendars, that the Town of Faith will be hosting their Veterans Day Parade on November 11th. It's, the opening ceremony starts at 10:00, the parade begins at 11:30. I'll put it in my announcements for the next meeting that's closer, but while we were talking about that, I wanted to make sure to mention that and support the Town of Faith in that. As a reminder, it is Halloween, Mr. Green just said. So if you get it online or in your mail, you get the lamplighter. There's some great Halloween safety tips there. Use lights and props so you can see costumes and visibilities. Make sure you avoid trip hazards. Make sure you got somebody with you that's an adult. Watch out for pedestrian safety. So if you were driving, and I will specifically say a couple of neighborhoods, if you're driving on Fulton Street on Halloween night or over in Fulton Heights neighborhood, there's about 1,500 people running around, having the best night of their life getting candy. So please, as a driver, please be safe. Be smart about your candy, especially choking hazards and probably how much you eat, right? And then also watch out for your pets. Sometimes people enjoy fireworks and things like that, so please just make sure you're taking care of your pets and watch out for costumes on those. And don't give them chocolate, by the way. So also, I would like to say that I would like to thank SRU for my breast cancer awareness shirt. Thank you, SRU, for all the work she did for breast cancer awareness during the month of October. Don't forget to vote. It is November 4th, and happy early birthday to Mr. Green. His birthday is on Saturday, so happy early birthday to you, Mr. Green.
And to you, Mayor, happy birthday. Early.
Yeah, early birthday. Moving on to the announcements. The 15th Annual Block Works Neighborhood Improvement Project will take place Saturday, October 25th, 2025, in the 400 and 500 blocks of Best Street in the Jersey City neighborhood. The Community Appearance Commission and the Housing Advocacy Commission are seeking volunteers to help with exterior home repairs. Tools, gloves, meals, and drinks will be provided. Please sign up to volunteer by visiting salisburync.gov/ blockworks. If I can do it, you can do it. It's a great event. And again, it's a busy weekend in Salisbury. The Parks and Rec Department and the Economic and Downtown Development will host a Halloween Fun Fest Saturday, October 25th, 2025, from 4:00 PM until 7:00 PM in downtown Salisbury and at the Bell Tower Green. Trick-or-treating with downtown businesses is from 4:00 until 5:30, followed by activities and entertainment at the Bell Tower Green until 6:00 PM, 6:30 PM. That will conclude with a costume contest. This event is free and open to the public. For more information, please call 704-216-PLAY. The Parks and Rec Department will also be hosting a spooktacular family fun night on Friday, October 31st, which for those of you, that is Halloween night, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the City Park Recreation Center. The event is free and open to the public, and will include games, trick-or-treating, and more. For more information, please call 704-216-PLAY. I mentioned earlier about it is election season, November 4th is voting day. The next regularly scheduled council meeting will take place on Wednesday, November 5th, 2025, at 6:00 PM to accommodate for November 4th Election Day. And the Public Arts Commission is collecting feedback regarding designs for the downtown mural to be painted on the back wall of Salisbury Police Department. The mural will be part of a larger project, Legacy North Carolina, 100 murals in 100 counties with one common theme, the people are the place. Please provide your input at salisburync.gov/legacymural by Saturday, November 15th, 2025. That's all the announcements. With that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. We have a motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all so much. Great work tonight.